Thirty-three, City of Somerton Work Session. Going to skip all formalities and just go straight to roll call.
Mayor Gerard Donaya.
Present.
Vice Mayor Luis Galindo.
Present.
Councilmember Jesus Roldan.
Present.
Councilmember Miguel Villalpando.
Present.
Councilmember Juan Castillo. Councilmember Martha Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilmember Lorena Delgado. May we have a form?
Thank you. Presentations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is to go, tonight's work session is to go over preliminary budget numbers. And to take any recommendations that you might have according to our budget. This budget is without the balanced budget. This is just preliminary numbers. And we'll start with the Fire and Ambulance Department.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm going to go over to some of the line items that I believe that I'm proposing for this budget year. It's on the, for salaries. Last year when we made all the arrangements and we did the compression, for one reason, we left out the battalion chief's position. And we have had it vacant for almost a year and a half now. And on that one, that's the only increase that I'm asking for is approximately twenty-four thousand dollar increase. To bring that competitive salary that will be the battalion chiefs. The other one that I am requesting, it's going to be a high number would be for overtime. On that one, once again, when we increased our salaries, we never took into consideration that the overtime was going to increase as well. So this year halfway, the budget, we ran through the hundred and sixty thousand that we had. I sat down and talked to Shona about it. We ran some numbers. And we're proposing through, well, I'm proposing three hundred and forty, where that would be kind of to come even with the salary increases. And also with all the special events. We have to understand that when somebody, like, for example, I use Parks and Rec, let's say that somebody calls in sick, their secretary or finance. Their work can sit down and be on hold till they come back the next morning. Whereas in the fire department, we need to have somebody there to keep the operations going. So when somebody calls in sick, when somebody takes PTO, I still need to bring somebody in to, to cover that position. So that's where we've seen the, the big increase in, in the salary use. The other one that is actually decreasing on my maintenance for vehicles, I had a hundred thousand dollars. Part of it was the last year I requested for repairs of the ladder truck. The ladder truck right now currently is in Phoenix. We're fixing the ladder, having some issues, and then the outriggers. I budgeted sixty thousand dollars in repairs. Hopefully that will take care of it. So that one, I'm reducing it back to the normal. But we believe it will be a yearly expense. And then the other big increase would be on our software and computer. Once again, every software that we're using in the fire service, there's an expense on, on it. And that one is still staying at the eighty thousand dollar mark. But that's taking care of our portion that we have to pay through YRCAs, which is for nine-one-one service, radios. The sub, the billing software that we're going to use in right now, and also the fire reporting software that we went through it last year. Last year, YRCAs paid ten thousand dollars, and we just paid the remaining sixty, six thousand. Well, this coming year, we're going to be all responsible, or a hundred percent of it would be the sixteen thousand dollars. And then the other one would be my physical. I'm moving it to other services. I'm trying to do a more detailed physical, the current one that we do right now. It's a general, we go to Pinnacle Healthcare, and they just do like a blood pressure check, blood work. This other one that I'm trying to do is more geared towards firefighters, which is more it, they're trying to prevent from cancer. They're trying to find out any other concerns that we may have beforehand that we can take over it. Take care of it. There, yeah, there's a component that's a cardiac related, and it goes more to detail on the, on the heart. One of the major lines of duty that's that we're having in the fire industry in the U.S., it's heart attacks after an incident. We'll go fight a fire, and then they come back to the station, and then they'll be having heart attacks. So that's something that I'm looking into getting for this year. Once again, I proposed for it last year, and it was reduced. So I put it back up in the, in the budget again. So those are my major ones. Any questions that you might have?
Chief, when, when I see that three hundred and forty in overtime, do we consider, you know, hiring more staff for that? So that are, you know, staff that they can burn out?
So we hired the additional three, the zero hero, and that's what we have been using right now to kind of put a hold to the, to the overtime. But once again, the proposal that we did was to provide better service to the community. And like I said, right now, if somebody calls in sick, we put that extra person. So ideally, we need three more additional to have a full, full house. But once again, if we hired those three additional, it would be not just their salary, it would be benefits and so. But that's something we can look into in the future.
I mean, I'm just kind of just three hundred and forty, I mean, that way we don't know.
Well, one comment, yes, since, you know, I've been in council every, seems that, that fire, every, every fiscal year, the overtime, it's always increasing or it's not. It, it just, it's been an issue all the time, and, and before it was because didn't have enough staff, but it seems that now we're almost doubling the, the overtime. I guess, you know, at least I would like to see more of a, you know, go into the, you know, what's happening is it there's only certain positions that are getting more of the overtime. I would like to see some analysis behind it, or is it just one couple of people that are getting the overtime? Because, yeah, it's a, it just stands out, and it seems that every, every, every year, that's, that's the same issue. That the fire department with overtime, so wages, it's always, it's either they go above budget, or now we're seeing double. And so that's, it appears that it's every year. So if we can get some analysis and see if, what positions are, if there's any single position that is getting overtime, and we can see what can be done, some efficiencies behind it. Because, yeah, it seems that every year overtime increases, and other years, in most of the years, we don't budget enough, and then it goes out of whack. And so, yeah, that's.
And kind of to answer your question, Mayor, I went back to what paperwork I could find, and like you said, every year, it's, we go over budget on, on the overtime. But it's mainly, like I said, just filling the positions. And then anytime that we have that it's extra, for example, we do a training, those are extra hours, so that's considered overtime. Some of the information that I put there on the, on the events, I just consider like the major events was like the Tamal Festival, Corn Fest. But just doing some more review, it's like the Speedway. When we work the Speedway, there's twelve races for the season. And like I said, all those are overtime. Now, we do get some money back because we charge. But then we have like the Caballeros Marathon on the first of the year, the Josefina Yepes, that we always, like I said, we help out by putting an ambulance. But once again, that creates overtime. The mayor race that we provide additional services, so like I said, we try to do it with the units that we have in service as well, but we always bring another unit in, and like I said, that's also what creates overtime. But it's not like we saying, oh, there's overtime, let's bring extra people. No, all the overtime that we create is because we're filling the positions that are currently, somebody calling in or PTO. But we will look into that.
Councilmember Villalpando, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm on board with, 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 with what you're saying. I mean, it's, you're, overall, you're talking about over four hundred and fifty thousand dollars additional in revenue that we're going to spend in either salaries or, or overtime. We do need to look at some, some of these events or requesting services, because I don't remember the Josefina nor the Caballeros event being an approved sanctioned event by, by city council in order to provide these, these services. So we need to analyze whether there's going to be a cost to them, especially now that we're paying overtime. And one quick question for Chief, you mentioned that it was, it was compression dealing with the battalion chief position. Was that correct?
So on, on that one, like I said, when we were last fiscal year, working on the compression issues with everybody, says that position was vacant. At that time, it was recommended that we left it like that, and we didn't do any increase. So that's why I'm asking for, for this budget year to.
Okay, are you looking to re-categorize it? Because compression is one thing, compression is due to years of service in that particular position. And when you re-categorize the, the particular, particular position to a higher pay grade, that's, that's a whole different thing. So which, which one are you requesting? Because how can we deal with compression if the position is empty?
Councilmember, this is Shona, Finance Director. It wasn't a compression issue with the battalion chief. What happened was last fiscal year, they did the compression amongst the, the off, the, the EMTs and, and the firemen. And with that, they had the battalion chief budgeted, but because of the compression issues was going to make that line item go over, that battalion chief did not get filled to, in order to use those salaries that were budgeted originally. So now, he, now that the compression issues and we're budgeting for all of the, the salaries correctly, the, the battalion chief is being put back as a regular position. So there's no change in, in the actual grade of the battalion chief.
Okay, so if there's no actual change in the pay grade, so we shouldn't be dealing with compression? Because compression only comes in play if, let's say, one of the, one of the firemen are is already in that position, and he's already experiencing his subordinates pretty much catching up to him due to the new pay scale.
Correct.
I mean, but how can you deal with compression if there's nobody there?
We are not dealing with compression this fiscal year. The mention, the mention of compression was for last fiscal year.
Okay, so, so why are we raising twenty, twenty thousand if the pay scale is already adequate?
That is for COLA.
Or, but we don't know what, what the amount is going to be for the salary offer for that particular position?
No, it's COLA throughout. The, so the difference in between the, the proposed budget for this year, for this coming fiscal year, and the difference between twenty twenty-four?
No, because he singled out, he singled out that particular position to increase of twenty thousand dollars for that position. Over twenty thousand dollars for that particular position. So that's why I'm questioning, why are you, if there's, if it's not filled, why are you requesting to increase that particular position over twenty thousand dollars?
I think that the original salary that was in fiscal year twenty twenty-four with the addition of the COLA across the board came up to twenty thousand overall.
Mayor, if I may. Yes.
Councilmember Villalpando, what we can do is get that detailed out for you. Get everybody the information exactly is clear. We will look at the market study for that position and come back to council and provide some information to get more clarity on this one item. Again, this is just proposed, and that's a good question, Councilmember Villalpando, and we'll make sure that we address it and provide that information to all of you. And then we, we can get direction from Mayor and Council from there.
Yeah, because I'm the biggest supporter of compression, believe me. I mean, we got a, we got, that's been a lingering issue. But how can I deal with compression if the position isn't filled?
Correct, and we'll, we'll get that information to all of you.
Yeah, and like Councilmember Villalpando said, on those special events, there's, we, we had a policy when Mr. McGahey was the, was, was a city manager. And, and there it spelled out, you know, as far as the public safety, what the responsibilities were. And, and there, there were some events that were mentioned that are not a city-sponsored event. So that's something that I think if, if that's affecting the overtime wages, wages is something that we, we need to look. And like I said, I, you know, we did an exercise with the overtime wages with the police department years ago. And it turned out that only the, a couple of people were getting all the overtime. So we want to look into, into that too, that, you know, make sure that if it is, and, you know, not just several people, and that is justified. That it's not like people are expecting to do overtime. And because, yeah, every, every year, every year, it just, yeah, fire department with the wages, with the overtime wages, they go up, we don't budget enough. And, and if this is what it is, fine, but at least if we budget it, that we make sure that, that we're looking at everything and before we approve this.
Mayor, if I may, we will definitely work on that list. We'll, we'll work with the chief on putting that list of events together so that you're a little bit more familiar. Or at least we're all on the same page of what's being supported and what's not. And then we can also look at, like the chief mentioned, there is the Speedway, and, and so you'll see that expense, but also the revenue that covers it, that's coming in also. So we'll, we'll work on that breakdown for all of you.
Any questions?
Mayor.
Yeah, yes.
Mayor, one more thing. I also want to recommend that we look at the, the way we staff all these calls. I mean, there is larger cities where, when they request an ambulance, only the ambulance shows up versus, versus multiple personnel. So may, maybe that is something that we need to take a look at too, is, is our use of, of personnel. But if we are short on personnel, and it makes sense to hire versus investing in overtime, then we should give a direction to, to staff to look into comparing both. Whether the overtime is more financially feasible for us or hiring, hiring new, new employees.
We, we could definitely do that, Councilman.
Any other questions or comments?
Real quick, Mayor, if I may, just a quick reminder, when you're talking, if you make sure your mics are on. Sometimes they're not, so just make sure that green light's on, please. No, thank you. Thank you very much for your time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're going to be looking at the senior center budget. First, I want to point out, if you look at the very bottom, I'm going to start there, because it's, the percentage down there is really off, fifty-three percent. But if you look at the capital outlay, there's three hundred and sixteen thousand in capital outlay, which is no longer going to be in this current year's budget, or this coming year's budget. So that's why there's a big difference there. We do have a little increase though. We didn't make a whole bunch of changes. What we did is, if you look at contract labor, the twenty-nine fifty-six nineteen, we moved it up to part-time. It's our, our contract lady, lady that works there, it's only ten hours a week. We reclassified into part-time, this because she's not really contract labor. If you look at twenty-nine fifty-six twenty, other materials and supplies, we did increase that quite a bit to cover. We were lacking in the supplies they have for the seniors, for their activities, for arts and crafts, board games and such. So we were really behind in that area. So, and she's been actually providing more activities during the week. If you go down to office supplies, twenty-nine fifty-six thirty, there's a change there. We did an average of what she was spending on office supplies, so we made an adjustment there from twenty-four seventy-two to thirty-seven twenty. And then the other big increase we did, if you go down to twenty-nine fifty-six forty-two special events, the annual trip, what we did is tack that onto that, the eight thousand dollars, that's why it increased to thirteen thousand. And that's their, their annual trip they take. So that's all the, the change, the changes that we have made in the senior center. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Oh, thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I just wanted, I know we'll do it more officially, but today with us is James Jones, our new Parks and Rec Director. So I just kind of wanted to mention, he'll be here at the next meeting, but I just wanted to point out that he is here and has been working with Rodney on, on the budget, so.
If you have any questions, ask James.
Well, I, I should reword that. Showing James the budget, because Rodney's been working on it, so.
Okay, next we have the facilities, which is this building here, just pertains to the city hall. Right now, we have a contract labor that's doing our janitorial work. We would like to, we're proposing to put in a full-time position. And in doing that, what we're trying to do is get more efficient. We'll be able, what we're, want to do is, this person's not just going to janitorial work, they're going to do our inventory on all their cleaning supplies for the whole city. They're going to be painting, changing AC filters out. So we're trying to, to get more out of it. Every time we need something done, we have to call the park staff over here. And the building's getting a little older, it's starting to have some little wear and tear on it and needs some upkeep. So we're thinking that's going to be a, a better option to have somebody full-time staffed here. If you go to ten sixty-eight sixteen Uniform allowance, we up that a little bit, five hundred just for boots and uniforms, if we do hire the full-time employee. And then ten sixty-eight nineteen contract labor, that's for window cleaning. We can't get the high windows, we don't have the equipment. We hire that out, and the carpet cleaning, we do it like twice a year. I really think that we need to start doing it three year, three times a year, because it gets pretty wore out and pretty nasty in between the cleaning the windows and, and the carpet. So we have fifteen thousand in there to cover the cost of that, so it went up five thousand.
So that would be for three times a year?
Yeah, three times a year, yes. This year was a little tough, because we kept raining, and we tried to get them done, and it just kept raining, so we held off. But we, we did it twice this year. The repair maintenance building six, or ten sixty-eight twenty-two, we add a little in there for the HVAC system and elevators. We, we do have an elevator service, but if it's, if something goes wrong with the elevator, it's not all covered within the contract. So we have to pay out extra for that service, and which had happened this last year. So we added some money in there for that, and they do service the elevator once a month to come out and check it. Ten sixty-eight twenty-four, we're looking at one new computer for the person that's going to be doing the, if, if we do hire on a full-time employee for doing the, keeping track of all the supplies and inventory, and also clocking in and out. And you see the utilities has gone up quite a bit. We, APS increase, and that's a bit, pretty good hit, thirty thousand on there. And then the computer software, we moved it to IT, so we no longer have that in our line items, so that'll be moving over to IT. And then on ten sixty-eight thirty-seven, other services, we have five thousand, are we up? That's for the alarm company, C and D, any service that's done on a regular basis to the city hall. So we did increase by twenty-one percent. But that's what we want to try to do. We're proposing to hire on a, a full-time employee. We won't have the contract labor at this building, and we think we'll be able to service the building and get more accomplished with our own employee. Any questions?
Any questions or comments?
Thank you. Parts. As you see on, where are we at? Ten fifty-six oh-one, the salaries and wages. We're proposing to have a full-time employee because of the new soccer fields going in over at Perico County Park. That should be done in, we're hoping in September. And then also along the lines of the, the pond area, the new park site over there is going to need a little maintenance when the pond goes in weeds. I'm thinking we're even, possible, we can even flood irrigate that, put some grass in and dust control until we get the park in or something. So I'm thinking that, you know, we'll have to mow it and maintain it a little bit, and then we can use it for open space for events or when not. Ten fifty-six oh-two, part-time wages, you see, that's a big difference there. What we did is we went down to contract labor, and all the aids that we have, we're moving them into part-time. That's because of a class, classification, they're not really contract labor. And if you see in ten fifty-six nineteen, we left seven thousand in there, that's for umpires and, and umpires and so we left that in, there's a cover the cost of those. Ten fifty-six fourteen is safety, drug test and physicals, that's for pre-employment and boots for the employees we purchase once a year. Ten fifty-six fifteen is educational and training. We are working on reclassify, or not reclassifying, backup, we are looking at job descriptions. So hopefully, it'll, it'll end up if they will have steps so where they can move up and get more pay. And it's going to require them to go to school or get a certification or training. So that's why we up that up. I'm trying to get three guys into a, into, into school over here with the University of Arizona. It's a landscape class, so that'd be part of this. The travel, ten fifty-six seventeen, we put six thousand in there, because we would like to attend the AP AR conference this year. I think it's a really good networking, and it, it's, you're able to meet up with vendors that you normally don't see, playground equipment, you know, for recreational stuff, and, and I think that'd be beneficial for the city. And then contract labor, we talked about that. You'll see in ten fifty-six twenty-one, repair, maintenance and equipment. Thanks to the council, we got two new mowers, one last year and one this year, and then we had two, we have two new gators. We decreased that because we've had no breakdowns, and we haven't been spending as much money. So we're able to decrease that by five thousand.
Question on that, Mayor, if I can, for the, the one you just talked about, the gators. How come we only spend six thousand? We have not just, haven't purchased equipment or?
Well, that's up to seven months, but this is going to increase because we did purchase some weed eaters and tremors. So this will increase by the end of the budget year.
Okay, so you, you continue.
Yes.
Okay.
Ten fifty-six twenty-nine utilities, APS, another one, that, that one increased forty-nine, it's just across the board, it's all our pumps, our buildings, everything to do with parks. And then ten fifty-six forty-two, special events, we, we're asking for an increase of forty thousand. We want to add one or maybe possibly two more events. One would be the Fall Festival, and our idea is to have a pumpkin patch, a carnival, and maybe some entertainment. Because we really don't do anything for around that holiday. And then also, we're looking at, and I don't know the proper term, Lou, you might be able to help me out with the term.
It'll be returning the Miss, Miss Somerton Pageant.
Miss Somerton Pageant. So we're thinking about doing, and it'll be a scholarship type thing. We'll, the winner will get money for a scholarship, so, and that's what we're trying to aim for. So overall, we're looking at a nine percent increase.
And Rodney, Mayor, if I may add to that, just a little on the Miss Somerton, we have the, the high school coming in. And I think it'd be something to start working towards scholarship, but also these young ladies representing the city of Somerton with the platform and getting involved in, in the community. And it's a, I think, a great way to, to be able to get out there, and especially, it'd be something for a scholarship, like Rodney mentioned, for them to, for educational, you know, college and university. So we want to start working towards that and, and provide something for, for those individuals. So we want to start working towards that and and provide something for for those individuals.
Any other questions?
Any other questions, comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, go ahead, Councilman.
Rodney, on the on the A P S. The usage for power for all the facilities. One of my my biggest pet peeves is these lights, they continue to be used. And. And and some sometimes it happens to be on the weekends when kids are playing. What's, I know there's a. There's an app that you guys use in order to turn on the lights and turn them off. But have we have has staff changed some of these codes? Because I mean, we we end up having to pay higher rates in A P S every single year, and it just seems like. There's outside parties that have access to to our lights. That aren't even on on the books at times. So so I want I want to make sure that these buildings, even let's say the community center. If if we need a rekey to make sure that. That accessibility is not open to to parties that aren't supposed to have access to it. Then we need to, we need to set money aside in order to to have those. Those in place in order to save save funds.
Yes, what what happens sometimes, and I'm not saying all the times, is. We'll have a team that rents a field and they'll they'll pay for two hours and then we we call in and tell them, hey, we want the lights on from sixty eight. Well, they'll leave at seven thirty and they'll stay on for a half hour. Nobody's on the field. So it makes it look like that nobody's there, but they paid for them. I know it's, it doesn't look good in the community's eyes, but I don't know, maybe we will just have to have a, you know, or one of our staff there. Checking in a little more often and trying to control that or have them call the staff member when they're done.
When was the last time that any of these codes or locks were have been updated or rekeyed?
We we really don't lock the ball fields. We leave those open, but nobody can get into the lights. We we just recently did a couple of lockups, probably about six months ago. But unfortunately, it seems like the keys get out pretty fast.
That's where the problem lies. The the keys are being given or lent out by, quite honestly, is our staff. I mean, if we're the ones that rekey them and these keys are getting lent out. Who's to say they can't go to the hardware store and get it made for for themselves? You know, I think it's a practice that we need to, we need to, quite frankly, stop and be on top of. Because I mean, it's, I understand that there has been times where somebody rents a ball field and they might not show up. But I'm talking, this thing at least happens on a yearly basis, easily ten times, ten fifteen times.
Mayor, if I may?
Yes.
Councilor Vialpando, as a matter of fact, Rodney and I talked about this a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago. So we are going to be looking at that and actually working with Rodney and the new Parks and Rec Director to address that. By, we talked about rekeying every couple of years, but also doing. Checkout or a or a key signing. Form to track all these and making sure that these things don't happen. So. We are aware of it, but thank you for bringing that up and we'll we'll definitely. Come back with you and give you an update on how we're we're going to be addressing this.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you.
I think.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Charles Gutierrez, Public Works Director. Tonight, we're going to touch on the highlights. We're going to start at fifty two seventy three fifteen, education and training. And we're going to be looking to each one of the sanitation workers to go through the Solid Waste Association of North America. To be trained and get certified through them. There's a small increase of a thousand dollars there. On the travel, fifty two seventy three seventeen, this will allow the sanitation workers to go to these facilities in Phoenix to get. Tested and certified. On fifty two seventy three twenty one, which is a repair, maintenance and equipment. Basically, this is for the equipment for the refuse trucks, different materials for the blowers. Things for the we for the sanitation workers to make sure that the yards are clean, their equipment is clean and things like that. On fifty two seventy three twenty seven, the gasoline and oil, we did up this up by two thousand dollars. Just because we know that the gas is not getting adequately applied to the correct codes. And we are working on that with finance and across the line on everybody. We have been tracking, it is going to affect this a little bit, not a whole lot, but by about two thousand dollars. On the last one is fifty two seventy three forty nine, which is the landfill charges. According to Yuma County, they're looking at a possible about a ten percent increase in their tipping fees. Looking at about a twenty thousand dollar increase on tipping fees over at the landfill charges. Overall, this is a doing an increase of about thirteen percent across the sanitation.
Charles, I understand that we're going to restart our recycling program and.
Yes, sir.
In theory, that saves on tipping fees. Are we taking that into account or?
Yes, at this time, we are taking that into consideration. We're looking at also the green, the green alternatives, possibly getting. Other credits back from the go the go green people over there on out there by the human nursery. But otherwise, everybody else charges us tipping fees. So.
So does does this budget reflect? Us restarting the recycling or it just assumes that we are not going to and it's just budgeting for. That increase. So if it's kept as it was kept this fiscal year.
Mayor, Trona Madell, Finance Director. We are doing an overall budget for the recycling center and that will be presented at a later time.
Okay, so this is just for?
This is just for sanitation only.
Okay. But we didn't have recycling this year, so everything was being, okay. Hopefully slower.
Yeah, this year twenty four was a line item in sanitation.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, um. Parks and Rec overlooked the C I P, so they'll be back to present their C I Ps.
That wouldn't give him no money.
Sorry about that. It was in a hurry to get out, I guess. The C I Ps, the first one we have is this, the A W's, the City Hall A W C leased space property, the building in the corner here for. We're proposing to remodel it or or do some reconstruction in there for office spaces for Parks and Rec to operate out of out of. We did a preliminary little design and and we got on and looked at some, maybe some cubicles and stuff in the front counter to go in there just to get started. And then also to be saw cutting the wall out in the hallway, so we don't have to come out from outside inside. To be right at the H R's, right across from H R there. So that'll be saw proposed to be saw cut, so we can get in and out of the building. The new center that over at where the boxing gym is. We're wanting to take out some of the walls to open it up for more group activity like wrestling. Maybe some M M A down the road or karate or something, then give it more room in there to make it a multi use facility. The offices are taken up by our room and they just got room basically for boxing and that's about it. The cultural center improvements, a hundred twenty thousand. The A C units are really, really bad shape. The roof needs some attention and the flooring really needs some attention. We're using that building five days a week and it's pretty heavily trafficked with dance classes and then rentals on the weekends. And it's it's in really need of some 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 upgrades there. So that's why we put that in there. The Centennial Park fencing, that's a wrought iron fence that we're proposing to put in, that's forty thousand. That one's going to roll over. We have the money, but it's, we're not going to have it done in time. We're waiting for A P S to get done with the underlying. Power lines there so we can put the fence in. And then one Silverado fifteen hundred truck, we have one that's, I don't know, probably seen it run around town. It's a Dodge red truck. The dash is completely out of the top of it. It's got the speedometer put working, so I don't know how many miles it has on it, but regardless, if we get a truck or not, we're going to pull that one out of inventory and. Auction it off. It's just not worthy of being on the road anymore.
For another year or?
No.
The seat bills work. We'll put it in the museum.
Vintage right there.
And then the Perry Coney Park Grant Matching Funds, that one's going to roll over because the project's not done. The restrooms came out of the the portion, the two hundred thousand that the city put into the project. So that that eighty thousand, two eighty two will roll over. And then down below.
All C I Ps are going to be done in two months, two months ago.
We're hoping to be done in October, that the soccer field project. Matter of fact, we opened the bids next Monday. So we're hoping to get rolling on that. And then down below, you'll see one is the part time park maintenance worker, one. And the other one's the full time facilities maintenance worker, one that I referred to in the in the budget, so.
Mayor, if I may, I just want to point out that the facilities worker, we did have one previously. But then we went to contract, but we want to, like Rodney mentioned, readjust that position so that efficiency wise. This person can do a little bit more to help us with the maintenance of city hall. So I just wanted to point that out, that that position did exist. We went to, we used this contract to. At least for the cleaning services, but we want to go back and readjust the job description.
The the pond and and the park area, is that in a in a different, it's not under Parks and Rec, something?
Yeah, it's in there. We actually have it working under Public Works. And we're we're going to be working on a update for next, not the next meeting, the meeting afterwards to give. Council an update on all the C I Ps where we're at. There's there's possibilities. I know Rodney mentioned that rollover, but when we say rollover, it doesn't mean the whole project's rolling over. It's what what is being able to be expended this year just of a timing, but. We'll we'll make that a little, we'll clarify that a little bit more when when we do the presentation so that you're aware of what's going to get done this year and what will we need to finish.
Yeah.
Mayor and Council, and that's all we have for tonight.
Any other questions or comments?
Comment. I was looking into the, I know we were worried about the lights in the park, you know, that keys are being handed. And I'm my worries about the gas. But how many people has keys to go put gas at the different vehicles? Because just adding the numbers is over a hundred thousand dollars in this three departments. And I know, but it's something that we have talked in the past that we needed to have more control about who who can go and put gas because. Like it is, I don't think so. There's somebody that you plug in and you put gas twenty gallons or how's that? How do you go control that?
I know. If I may, Mayor, Vice Mayor, we're actually working right now with sellers. On a on a. McNeese, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, McNeese, we're going to do the cards. So we will be, everyone will be having a card. Currently, it's manually where you sign in. And you put your department, your name, mileage and vehicle and vehicle number. And gallons that you are using. So that's how we're tracking it right now manually. We're going to go to a card. Card system where that you will have to do it with your card and and you can't go in there and press a code or something. So. It'll track who's using it, how it's being used. That's being reviewed. And Public Works and so will Finance will be looking at the amounts.
Mayor, may I? So that's an extensive conversation that me and Charles have had because that was my first. Look, when I first went through the invoices for fuel. Nobody was reconciling them. So we are reconciling them now. So and you'll you'll know, Charles can attest to it as far as we're going through every invoice, making sure that. The gallons match the prices, making sure we get a monthly report from Sarah from Public Works. And she tells us how much gallons that she's ordered and then we reconcile them to the invoices and make sure they're allocated correctly. But the card system will be detrimental to making sure that there's security measures on there. Making sure that they have the PIN number. So if we see a spike in, say that this one person's been by, been pumping five gallons. For two weeks and then all of a sudden he pumps fifteen gallons, we can catch that, pull it in. And then go to Charles or whoever it may be that that's their director and they can question and say, okay, well, what happened here? So yeah, we are extensively looking into that to make sure that that fuel is going down.
Thank you because one, it's been one of my pet peeves since I started like ten, twelve years ago.
Yeah, we always mention it too.
It's something that I know it's, anybody can go and put gas and I, you know, it bothers me when we're complaining about, you know. Councilmember Elpanda was concerned about the lights and I understand that. I'm concerned about how much gas are we spending because just in the three departments, it's over a hundred thousand dollars. And it's, you know, I was, it's a lot of money. I know it's, we have a lot of vehicles, but I want to have more control of what's going.
And then we all are looking into next fiscal year, doing an R F P for fuel as well to see if we can get the better prices out there. Because right now we're only subject to McNeese's prices and their prices go up and down as we as the months go on.
So Public Works Director is going to be in charge of. Vice Mayor, it's your duty to follow, follow.
I'll stay there for a whole day.
Please report back. Any questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may. We we're doing this very efficiently and we appreciate your time. So we will look at adding more departments in a in the next work session timeframe to catch up. If we knew we were going to go this quick, we would have maybe been able to do them all tonight.
Double it.
Yeah, yeah, we and we did. But we'll definitely look at that and and again, thank you for your comments. And we will definitely be following up with department directors and getting that information back to you.
And it shows showing us a testament to all the the clarity you put in this budget before. There were a lot of questions. It was like, yeah, so, yeah, thank you.
I saw it something there. I think. Department that goes and presents something and you get stuck on something, she goes right away and knows what she's going. You know, I I asked Galindo last time in the meetings, he said. You're explaining things so clearly.
Yeah, we were, we in budget meeting, we expected to be here late, ten, eleven and just. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seven twenty two meetings return.